Good evening, everyone. The time is 5:06 PM on Monday, April 17, 2023. On behalf of the Montgomery Township Board of Education, we welcome you and as well on behalf of our superintendent and her cabinet to this special meeting. So at this time, I will read our statement of open meeting and public participation. In accordance with the State Sunshine Law, adequate notice that this meeting was provided by mailing notice of meeting on April 12, 2023. Notice was provided to the Board of Education members, the Montgomery Township Clerk, the Rocky Hill Borough Clerk, the Public Library, Township Posting, School Posting, PTSA Officers, Carrier News, Montgomery News, the Princeton Packet, the Trenton Times, and the Star and Lenter. The Board reserves the right to enter into executive session during all meetings of the Board of Education. And it is our intention to conclude this meeting no later than 6:00 PM. So interim Board Secretary, Amin, would you please commence with the roll call?
Mr. Carlson?
Here.
Ms. Dally?
Here.
Ms. Philak?
Here.
Ms. Fico Herman?
Present.
Ms. Harris?
Here.
Ms. Spina?
Present.
Mr. Thomas?
Here.
Ms. Muleka, do you want to go again?
Here.
And Mr. Wes Wells?
Present. At this time, we will all rise to see the panel.
I pledge allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Everybody, please be seated and thank you. It is at this time, according to page two of our agenda, is our single public comment. And I will read the instructions. Members of the public are allowed one opportunity to address the Board this evening regarding the action agenda item only for up to a maximum of three minutes. All comments or questions must be directed to the Board Chair. The Board Chair may need to refer an issue to the superintendent if the particular issue has not been handled through the appropriate chain of command within the school district that starts at the school level before coming to the Board for response. Our responses may be provided at the end of this session. Board Secretary Amin, you want to commence with public comment? Is there any public comment at this time? The Board closes our single public comment session at this time. So now, I would like a motion to approve our action agenda items. It looks like 3.1... Hold on. To 3.4. 3.1 to 3.4. Thank you, Maggie, the second.
Second.
Thank you. At this time, we will now engage in discussion on our 3.1 to 3.4 action agenda items specific to operations, facilities, and findings. Yes.
So back at the March 10 OFF meeting, we had representatives from our health insurance who were Brown and Brown. They made a presentation about the projected increase that we were facing with the existing carrier for the 23-24 school year. And so the parents...
Hold on, Mary's in this. Board Secretary Amin, she's going to mute everyone because we're hearing this noise that's interrupting our ability to hear. That's a point of privilege.
So and they came with a recommendation to go for being self-insured, going with the shift. And I believe that was presented at the March 14 business meeting for discussion. We have representatives here tonight from our... Mr. Tom Tifuri, who's here to answer any questions that the Board may have before we vote on the change in the carriers. I'll just point out that we've had a number of conversations with the MTEA. And they're on board with the coverages are the same. But we want to get as much reason for the meeting tonight. So we have the 11 weeks necessary to have the staff meetings and get all the ID cards issued and mailed out so they were good to go on July 1st.
You summed it up well.
He's like, "Good, I can leave."
Do board president? Yes.
Mr. Tifuri?
Yes.
Hopefully, I pronounced that correctly.
You did, you'd be great.
Can you give us a projection of the savings of ship, of switching to ship from self-insure?
Sure. So is this okay right here?
No, that's okay.
It's fine. All right. So it was representing about a 1% savings below the budget number, which is about $150,000 below budget, but a very big delta based on the renewal in excess of $2 million. So this is a, it's a night and day type of scenario. And again, it's the shift for the health benefits and Benacard for the drug, right? So those two components combined, when you take a look at that medical and that drug combined, those two things came in about $150,000 below. Okay. $150,000 below the budget, but significantly below what we were faced with with renewing to keep everything in place and stay self-insured with the incumbent stop-loss carrier. And we weren't getting any bites from like competitive information on the stop-loss as well. It's very different.
And on the self-insure portion, what was one of the biggest drivers for that increased cost?
So the stop-loss market is volatile at times. It's worked out really well for Montgomery these last few years. We're seeing with other districts as well some difficulty getting that what's called maximum liability number in line, meaning that stop-loss carriers are projecting where they think claims are going to be a little differently than say the schools' health insurance fund, which really is cherry picking risk, or Benacard, which only focuses on drug. Those are two entities that are in the public market in New Jersey. That's all they do, right? For the, right? For the most part, Benacard does some extra stuff, but for the most part, it's public sector. These stop-loss carriers, they're looking at it like the whole market. So it's worked to our advantage for several years, but we just couldn't get, we couldn't convince them otherwise to lower that maximum liability where they thought the claims were going to be projected were significantly higher than where the schools' health insurance fund and the Benacard was willing to take on that risk. Your exposure is capped, right? So like with, with self-insurance, you pay the claims. Yes, there's a maximum liability, but you're on the hook for the claims. Schools' health insurance fund and Benacard, there's a rate, there's an assessment and a rate. Beyond that, the risk is on the schools' health insurance fund and on Benacard. So they were willing to do that and get us a price point that made a lot of sense for the district.
I wanted just a question, sorry. So I know at one point, our claims experience in the district was astronomical, was up there. Has it leveled off, decreased?
Yeah. So there's a term that we're using, and you're not alone, melting up, right? So prior to, or right around the pandemic, actually, you went self-insured the month, right? March of 2020. So you took a significant drop in claims. And then on top of that, what was called immaturity. So people that were going to the doctor with Maxor or with Horizon prior to March 1/20, those claims were processed. So you got a double hit of really good... That first year was fantastic. You saved in excess, I believe it was about $800,000, if I'm not mistaken. Could be wrong there. A lot of money. The pandemic happens, the COVID lockdown ends, and then all of a sudden, we saw this COVID climb back, right? This bounce back with this increased utilization. That bounce back continued to a certain degree, and then it's like now leveled off. What was in there was a lot of stage four cancers, a lot of things in districts, specifically spinal stenosis, back surgeries, very intense, out-of-network stuff. People were getting their needs addressed, but a lot of significant claims that just didn't exist prior to that. This is, you know, it's a direct result of the pandemic as well as mental health as well. I think at this point, from what we're seeing, not only just in your claims experience, obviously, the shift and Benacard saw the same thing when they looked at your data. But across a lot of districts is we've kind of hit this plateau, and now we're seeing it mellow out a little bit. But the stop-loss carriers just aren't quite there yet. So they're looking at, you know, the much larger picture. It looks, so it's promising, but you know, the future is always uncertain, yeah? So we do our best to try to curb that, you know, hedge that risk.
Thank you, George.
You're welcome.
So I had a question about, it reads here on, I guess, 3.4.3 about the reports that you're going to provide to the Board, almost like advising of the status of the claims and where we are in our new participation in shift, and then as well forecasting. So what's the frequency that you'll be communicating or providing these reports to the Board?
So at least monthly.
Okay, great.
Yeah, at least monthly. What you're referring to is namely run-out claims. So when you're self-insured, you tuck away a reserve called the incurred but not reported, IBNR. Okay? So there's a set amount of money that's designed for this exact purpose. You unhook from a self-insured plan, and you go to a fully insured arrangement, schools' health insurance fund, you change what's a third-party administrator. So you, you're prepared, and you have that reserve of money to be in this position right now to do something like this. Okay? Though that money is used to pay out run-out claims. It's for claims that are incurred up until June 30 that are still Horizon's responsibility to pay. But you are responsible for continuing to pay those claims for folks that incurred, right? The shift and Benacard, their timeline starts July 1, people that go to the doctor then. Someone's hospitalized on June 25, and their claim isn't even submitted until middle of July. You're going to pay that claim down, right? So typically, that's two and a half to three months worth of claims. 95% to 98% of the claims are paid in that two and a half to three-month period. And after a year, then you get into timely filing. And there's generally, it trickles. So on a monthly basis, we'll be able to provide you with what that run-out is.
Okay, good.
Again, the IBNR, we've done this a couple of times where we've switched arrangements. And you know, knock on wood, the IBNRs that we've recommended have been enough to sustain the run-out.
Okay, great.
I think it's a lot of...
You know, like one of your colleagues, I think, has a comment or was a question. Mary, can you hear us?
I can, thank you very much. This is Mary Muscaral from Brown and Brown. I was just, I know Jim Finn is on the line too from Brown and Brown, our student president. I just wanted to make mention of that. It doesn't sound like he's unable to mute. I'm not sure if, when we all got muted, if he was, well, lost that ability. Is somebody able to unmute him? He's on the phone ending in 61.
Yeah, I think you can mute them for conference, they have to unmute themselves.
Yeah, he can unmute. He has the ability to unmute himself.
He has the ability to unmute.
Just like in the phone.
He should be able to.
Thank you. Do you happen to know what the key is?
It's the microphone. It should be at the bottom.
The microphone symbol, it should be on his phone. The same icon that appears should be on his phone, and he can...
Yeah, but I cannot, I would...
You can unmute. I can't unmute himself. So he's locked on.
He could leave the phone and come back in.
Okay, we'll give that a shot. Thank you.
That's all good.
Okay, great.
Last question, I promise. So do you, or have you seen a, I want to say shift. I know that's the name of the program, but a move from district statewide, going from self-insured to the, to shift?
To the school self-insurance fund? I don't know of any particular movement, like from one particular... There's only 35 school districts that are self-insured out of 583. You share, it's such a good fit, or I should say, it's, it makes sense in a lot of ways when you think about it philosophically because both of the pool is self-insured. You're self-insured, they're self-insured. So you share in the same types of savings that you've been experiencing. So like premium taxes and certain ACA taxes and regulations and whatnot, they don't apply to the schools' health insurance fund. So for some of the reasons that you went self-insured, you're going to still benefit from that. So it does make some sense for districts that don't want to take on all of that risk or they're faced with, you know, a significant renewal from a stop-loss carrier, that the schools' health insurance fund is kind of a solution for them. But you know, listen, they're taking districts that, again, they're cherry picking that risk. If there's a district that they want, out of 10 that we send them, they may actually quote on three or four. And two might actually be appeasing enough for us to actually make the recommendation to go. So it's definitely a going thing. Districts want to join it, they want to be part of it, whether they're self-insured or fully insured. You know, I don't think it's really, it doesn't make sense for that district, that individual district.
Thank you.
It's a good question, though.
Jim is here. Jim?
Good afternoon, everybody. Can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Hey, Jim, we hear you.
Hi. Thanks for facilitating all of this. I just got off a plane. I'm driving, which is why I'm audio only. Is my audio okay?
Yes. May I have a please?
Yes.
Great. So first thing I'd like to comment on before you resume Board discussion is the earlier question about savings. Now, savings have to be compared to what? And I know Tom took a stab at answering that. But I want to point out, and Tom, I know you have the information with you, that even if you board approve what we've recommended, the increase in the entire budget for health benefits is going up by a significant percentage. Correct, Tom?
That's correct.
And that is approximately what percentage, Tom?
14, 14, 14 and a half, I believe.
14.7%. Now, if you don't make this decision tonight and we remain self-funded and go with the lowest available qualified stop-loss policy, there will be an additional, approximately $2 million required to fully fund your budget for next year. So I just want to make sure that when we talk about savings, it's not savings versus current expenditures. It's only a tiny savings versus budgeted for next-year expenditures. But there's nowhere in this puzzle to create new money for people, programs, and facilities. I just wanted to emphasize that. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim.
And I remember that that was because health prices went up.
Right. Oh, yes.
I had a, a woman, how long, how long was this contract for? I think I'd heard it before, but I forgot.
So with the school self-insurance fund? So it's a philosophically, it's a three-year, but you, it's really year by year, and you can get out of that with 60 days' notice. Mary, you're probably more attuned to that, but I know that it's a, how, what's the notice required to leave the schools' health insurance fund?
That's correct, 60 days.
Okay, I'll take, I'll take a stab at that if we could, Mary?
Okay, Jim.
All right. So the question is, what are the exit terms associated with the schools' health insurance fund?
Mm-hmm, yes.
So tonight, one of the resolutions you're passing, oxymoronicly and paradoxically, commits the Board to a three-year relationship, a three-year relationship with the schools' health insurance fund. However, paradoxically, you can get out at any time with 90 days' notice. I'd like to point out that 14 of my personal school district clients in New Jersey are in the fund, some going all the way back to 2012. And it has performed so well that not a single one of my clients has left the fund. Got it?
That's promising, Jim. Thank you.
So I don't doubt that, but if we're voting on a three-year contract, there's some change that would have to be made in our vote to account for other possibilities? Jim, is it written somewhere that we were year to year, and then we have a 90 days or 60-day notice?
I think Jim explained it, right?
I think if you're voting for a three-year with the option to get out, would they 90 days?
I didn't see that option.
No. There's, I'm sorry, there's no penalty, there's no penalty associated with that either. Sometimes there's a penalty for, you know, terminating. There's nothing like that that exists.
All right, good. I don't, I'm just making sure.
Of course, yeah.
Is it required for Secretary Amin that is specifically identified?
Well, Tom, I'm guessing there's a, there's a contract that's not part of the resolution that would specify those.
That's what I'm thinking.
Yeah, so there are several resolutions that are, you know, shift is a public entity, right? So there's several resolutions that are just off the cuff, right? That they require you to approve. You know, again, I think there are 105, 110 or so school districts that are in the program. You know, this has been their way. But to Jim's point, you want to get out if it's not a fit, it's a 90-day notice. But yeah, the resolution there, we did not alter those resolutions. Those are from the schools' health insurance fund, and they do ask that you approve those.
Tom, may I add something?
Go ahead, Jim.
Tom Tifuri, may I add something?
Yeah, go ahead, Jim.
Is the question or concern about the nature of a contractual document?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, so here we go. The shift, the schools' health insurance fund, is a public entity. It is governed by New Jersey Title 17. One of the documents that you would be executing is called an indemnity and trust agreement. It is a statutorily dictated document. It is a contract of cohesion. It cannot be modified. And it's part of the document bundle that I previously shared with your administrators. Okay? There will be no other contract between shift and the district relative to the medical insurance because your resolution to join, your indemnity and trust agreement, your designation of a risk management consultant being us, the designation of a fund commissioner, and the Title 17 statutes that govern health insurance funds are the entire kit and caboodle.
So Jim, would you guys be considered the shift commissioner or would that be the business administrator?
We always recommend the business administrator and an alternate.
Yeah. Got it. Thank you.
We're voting for that tonight as well.
Yes.
I'm sure. Larry helps, Larry helps.
So you mentioned that, like in the documents that we received, there is a section that talks about rates being adjusted based on the performance and the claims that are being filed. Right? So knowing that our district became kind of, you know, in financial, you know, concern because of the health claims that were being filed, how are the rates potentially going to increase if we see a similar increase in the, in the claims? Will that be a burden on our employees or will that be a burden on the district?
So that's a great question. So one of the, would you like to take this, Jim?
Jim will be here.
Go ahead, Jim. Walk in the door in a few minutes.
Tom, I didn't bypass the Dunkin' Donuts in Terminal C to get to my car on time to not say anything.
I know, I know. How dare I? Go ahead.
All right. Tom, can you repackage the question for me? Because I didn't hear the entire thing.
Sure. So Jim, what kind of, what kind of rate action can the district expect from the shift, given that we just talked about how their claims were, although they performed well for the self-insurance workout, recently, they've seen an elevation similar to other districts? So how does the rate impact work beyond 7123?
Okay, great question. Number one, for the first two years of membership through June of '25, the rate change for your shift medical rates will be identical to the overall change of the fund. What does that mean? July 1 of '24, if the entire fund needs a medical rate increase of 4%, your rate increase would be 4%. July 1, '25, if the entire fund needs a rate increase of 3%, your rate increase would be at 3%. After that, the third year and thereafter, the shift risk management plan works like this. If your claims experience is poor, your rate change can be as much as two and a half points higher than the average. If your claims experience is great, your rate change can be as much as 2.5% below the average. But for the next two years, the performance of this juggernaut, 105 school districts, $500 million budget, $120 million surplus, and $40 million of declared dividends, whatever the rate change is as a percentage, will be Montgomery's rate change.
And the second part is like who will, who will have to take on the burden of the increase in the rate? Would that be the employees or will that be additional funds that will be required in the budget?
Jim, did you, did you get that question?
Can you amplify it, please?
Sure. So with that rate action for the subsequent years, who takes on that rate action? Is it the employee? Is it the district? Is it a combination? Who absorbs that, that increase year over year?
Okay, great question. So New Jersey Public Law, Chapter 44 of 2020, established across all 600 school districts in the state, no matter who their carrier was, a plan design called the Educator Health Plan. And in that plan design, employees pay a percentage of salary, salary for its health insurance. In every other plan design, plans called Direct 10, Direct 15, et cetera, employees pay a percentage of salary, of premium, excuse me, of premium. So unless folks join that Educator Health Plan plan design, which has some drawbacks, okay? As the rates go up, their contribution goes up.
And what's the other option? So if somebody doesn't join the educator plan, is there another option for the employees?
So...
Tom, can you stipulate the, the very...
Yep, sure. So you have a, there's a plan menu, if you will, right? Of various, various plans. $10 copay plan, $15 copay plan. So they have a bundle, right?
So shift would be one of the options.
No, no, no. All of those plans exist today, right? And there's, there's costs associated. So if I want a $10 copay plan or 15, if I want a $15 copay plan, I'm going to pay the highest amount. If I choose to take the educator health plan, I no longer pay a percentage of premium. I pay a percentage of my salary. It's about half the cost out of my pocket. And I, but I'm choosing to go to that less rich plan. All the plans that exist today with Horizon are going to be copied over equal to or better than with the school's health insurance fund. So the same plans exist, right? And year over year, every year at open enrollment, employees can choose to go from one plan to the, to the other. The only other caveat is that the educator health plan and the, and the Garden State Plan through Chapter 44, those are the only two plans that are available for anybody hired in the district after July 1 of 2020. Any, any employee hired prior to July 1, 2020, they, they have a full gamut of all the different plans that they have available. It exists today, it will continue to exist in the school's house, in the shift.
Effectively, you choose your own rate.
You choose your, right, you choose the cost.
Well, let's say like, if you like a certain plan, and it's like you like PPO. And right now you pay a certain rate and then after that third year, because of the performance of our district, the overall rate goes up. So that means that if you want to keep the same plan, the premiums for the employees will go up.
Correct, this is nothing that's specific to the shift. So the rate, the rates typically go up every year. Now, we had some, a really good run here where we, we've been able to keep those rates, the pseudo rates is what they're called today, in line or no increase, right? So we've done really well the last few years. This is now going to represent an increase, to Jim's point, an increase to the current plan. Those people in the educator health plan, they're not going to see an increase out of their pocket. It's tied to their salary. As their salary increases, then their contributions go up. Everybody else in those other plans, they are going to see a bump in their, in their contributions. And then every year after this, whatever that rate increase is, they're going to see a contribution increase unless they choose the educator health plan.
So Jim mentioned that I guess typically you have what, like 4% annual increase in rates? If we perform poorly, then that's another two, two and a half percent, so more or less.
Six and a half.
Six and a half.
Right.
So right now, it looks like, oh, well, a lot of districts in New Jersey claim an increase in their health cost by 15%. What is, how is that kind of, kind of contributing to the change in our benefits? Is it going to save us money? Is it going to also kind of, we will continue to see that 15% increase? I guess that's what I'm trying to do to us.
You, Jim, did you get all that?
Yes, I believe the question was, how is the large increase that a lot of other districts are experiencing influencing the equation for Montgomery?
Yes.
Is that it? Okay, great, yep.
Okay, so if what is being referred to is the January 1st, 2023 rate increase in a program that competes in the marketplace called the School Employee Health Plan, then that is a question that is shaped in part by politics. And what do I mean by that? So right now, the school's health insurance fund is a pool that competes with the state of New Jersey program, the School Employee Health Plan. And the jargon is very easily confusable, but let's call it the state of New Jersey plan versus the school's health insurance fund plan, the state and the shift. What happened with the state plan is, in the middle of a pandemic, they gave themselves three rate decreases in a row and then decided to give everyone a free premium holiday in February 23, thereby digging themselves a $300 million ditch out of which they could only partially climb with a big rate increase of 15%. Now that program is an insurer of last resort, meaning groups with good claims experience that don't want to play that game can leave and groups with poor claims experience can go in. Tom alluded to the fact, I think, that in the shift, they can select the underwrite. They can decide to not admit bad risks and they can decide to admit good risks. So as long as that state of New Jersey plan uses that insurer of last resort model, the school's health insurance fund is going to outcompete it significantly. And I hope I addressed the heart of that question.
Yes, thank you.
Thanks, Jim.
Thank you. That's actually very good. Do board members have any more questions?
I do have two questions. So the first question is just to clarify, because what I just, Jim, can you just repeat what you said about not insuring, that you have the option of not insuring with the increased prices?
Sure. If you're, if you're talking about the comment I just made, so, okay. So there are 10 risk bearers, as we call them, 10, in the New Jersey school district marketplace. And I won't name them all, but the only one that is an insurer of last resort is the School Employee Health Plan or what we call the state plan. That's the plan with the $300 million deficit. That's the plan that made a big splash in the news with a big rate increase. 15% for the schools in that plan and Tom, 22% for the municipalities. Do I have that correct?
22 for the municipalities and actually 25 for the state, the state employees.
Right, correct. The only carrier, the only risk bearer that has to give well running groups and poorly running groups, healthy groups and unhealthy groups, the same exact rates by law as the state of New Jersey. Every other risk bearer, Aetna, Ameral, Cigna, Horizon, the school's health insurance fund can say, we don't want to quote, or they can say, we'll quote, but it's very high, or they can say, we'll quote and we'll be reasonable. So that's why the school's health insurance fund has done so well in attracting very good risk groups to the point where they've declared $40 million of dividends of excess underwriting gains that have gone back to the member districts in the past five years. Did I address the heart of your question?
I think so. I, I read something recently, I just have a follow up, I think, about whether or not, whether or not we as a district, I have no idea, but we want to be clear on this question, insure retirees and for how long and if that is effective.
Okay, great question. So every retiree who's qualified, usually by virtue of working 25 years or more, has their lifetime health coverage through the state health benefits plan, the state of New Jersey plan. So whether you're in the state plan or not through your active employees, your retirees go to the state plan. Because of that, every risk bearer that's not the state plan, Aetna and Horizon and the shift and all the rest, pay a surcharge called the retiree surcharge. It's about one and a half percent of the whole budget. And that money goes back to the state of New Jersey to subsidize the cost of retirees that are coming from districts that are not insuring their active employees in the state of New Jersey plan. And that surcharge has been built in to your financials and is included in all the numbers we've previously discussed.
Thank you, that answered my question.
Great.
I have one more question. So for managing this plan, is there, like, how is this company being compensated? Is there like a fixed fee that each district pays or is it per insured employee? Like how much the district will have to pay to have this plan administered? Is it like a percentage?
Okay.
Like a management fee? You know, usually when you have a fund, right, like you have a management fee.
All right, I'll happily answer that. Tom, may I?
Yeah, go ahead.
So 90?
Sorry, Jim. We're making money. It's okay. Looks like Tom is going to have to answer after all. We lost you.
Yeah, Jim refused to answer.
Oh, we lost you, okay.
I'm here.
Go ahead, go ahead, Jim. Floor's yours.
So every dollar you're paying to shift, 90 cents will be paid out in claims. Seven cents are retained by a company called Perma, which is the management company for school's health insurance fund. And from that 7%, they pay the various vendors. In this case, Aetna will be your primary administrator. Your folks will have an Aetna card, an Aetna member portal, and their claims will be paid by Aetna. The remaining three cents, 1% of that is our broker fee and 2% approximately is the retiree surcharge that I referenced. And all of these costs and cost structures were disclosed in the follow on materials to our presentation to the OFF committee in March.
Thank you. Board members, are there any more questions? All right, so Board Secretary Amen, hold on, please.
Mr. Carlson? Ms. Dolly?
Yes.
Ms. Fielek?
Yes.
Ms. Franko-Herman?
Yes.
Ms. Harris?
Yes.
Ms. Smeena?
Yes.
Mr. Todd?
Yes.
Ms. Willette Gerne again?
Yes.
Ms. Spence Falls?
Yes.
Question carries.
Fantastic, so that brings us to the conclusion of meeting this evening. The dedication would like to send a huge thanks to Ron and Brown.
Thank you all for your time, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for Ron and Brown's expertise and guiding us accordingly and for Board Secretary Amen and for just jumping right in and doing so in outstanding manner. So should there be no objections? Motion to adjourn this meeting today on Monday, April 17. All in favor? Any opposed or any abstentions? Enjoy the rest of your evening, everyone.
Have a good night, bye bye.